Okay, we'll call to order the April 11 meeting of the Cold Spring Planning Board. Chair's remarks. Not much. The Silver Spoon, the 124 Main, Purchase to Stew. So then obviously, the planning, the Village Board was then willing to consider the recommendation for parking waivers. And which obviously then puts the change of use through, all that was approved, so they've got, they've got a change of use, a stop work order, but that's another matter. So, that's all resolved. I think that's really the only thing to report. Approval of minutes. These we might actually want to take with us, because it was kind of dense, the discussion on 21 Parsonage.
This was one month ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if people feel more comfortable just taking them and we can do them next time, we're pretty current.
Okay.
I saw the article in the end.
Alright.
Yeah, I think I need a little time to go through them too, because there was just a lot of very, um... You know, like the difference between what a merger for zoning, merger for, you know.
We're gonna read through homework or...
Yeah, I can send, you want me to send it to you electronically?
I can take it homework, we did homework.
Okay, very good, okay. Reports of members, members, reports.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Correspondence. Couple of things came in. Erin, the Chair of the ZBA. Let me just pull this up so I have it. Things faster on my phone. So the ZBA scheduled a public hearing for 21 Parsonage on April 18.
That's next.
Uh, which is next, next week, yeah. I was at their, I was at their prior meeting. And they asked what the, what the Village, what the Planning Board would like to see with respect to giving an opinion on 21 Parsonage. And my position, you know, and I want to make sure you guys are in alignment. Or hear what you, you know, where you're, where you are on this, as I said, I'd, I'd really rather see the, the logic on the five factors of variance. You know, as to what the, what the logic is. It's a very unusual situation because of the merger.
Would those not be coming to us though, anyway?
It would normally come, yeah. Well, it's, it's also, it's frankly, it's also late in the game for the applicant not to present the logic for the five, you know, the, the, the five, you know, the five conditions of variance.
Oh, they, they haven't provided.
No, there's really no, there's really, there's a little bit, but there's really no narrative as to kind of what they're doing. And, but what the ZBA has asked for is, you know, could you, could you just tell us about the site plan? And my position was, well, we already did, right? We kind of said, we don't really want to touch this because, until there's a decision or some sort of direction. And I said, I think what would make more sense is to hold the public, if they're gonna hold their public hearing and schedule it immediately, which they did. I said, you could hold it open, you don't have to roll for 60 days, you could leave the comment period open. And then we, and then you could send it over to us and ask us what our opinion is on this, on this site plan that you've now vetted with the neighbors who are very much impacted by this change. And then anything else that comes along, as well as the applicant making their case for their, you know, for, for the, for the variances. So we agreed to that. And then I got the email from Erin saying, the Chair of the ZBA saying, "The ZBA requested the Board help us understand the planning issues around the application. Could the Planning Board please discuss again, if necessary, the following and summarize for the ZBA's benefit? Does the site plan create any planning concerns that would be hard to resolve? Does the application create planning concerns that are unique in the Village?" So, I replied back that, you know, we, we, I was, we were pretty clear in the meeting that we, I wanted to wait. I don't know how you guys feel about it. If we, you know, if, if, the, the language is a little concerning to me too. Does the site plan create any concerns that would be hard to resolve? I mean, I don't know whether that means prior to taking action, after taking action.
Right. Well, also, is this based on a, I mean, is, my assumption is that when a board schedules a public hearing, it is at the point where they deem the application to be complete and all outstanding questions have been answered, right?
Yes, yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to go to public hearing unless you have everything you need.
Right, and so, so one, I'm kind of puzzled about the breadth of these questions. And also, the, the questions there, they seem to be, they're, I don't know that we can answer those questions.
Well, it was interesting, the, Donald, the Prior Chair, and Erin were saying, "We'd kind of like to know what you think with respect to the safety of the site plan." And my response was, listen, we, Erin was saying, oh, you know, talking about like metrics or whatever on safety, about, you know, moving driveways. And I said, that, that's what planners do. The Planning Board implements what planners have already put in place. We are supposed to understand the code and implement the code according to the, the letter of the code. So I said, that's not something we're able to do, it's something a consultant would do.
Well, is that...
I said, but, I said, but what you do know and what we, and what we do rely on is the fact that all of these setbacks and all of these bulk conformance requirements are in fact because of safety. Transfer of fire, transfer smells, transfer of anything. So I said, you, it, you know, if you have a plan before you that has a zero front yard setback, you know, a one-foot front yard setback and a, you know, and a zero, you know, setback from the driveway, and, you know, I said, you can answer the question yourself, right? Which is that, well, it's not as safe as something that's conforming, right? The reason that the conformance is there is to, is, is for all of those things. Obviously, that you have compatible uses that have reasonable buffers between them, buffers for just quality of life, buffers for safety. So, I, I said, and what, what I, what I didn't understand was, so what we had said, certainly begrudgingly, because we had an incomplete application and we're meeting with the applicant, we said, "Listen, if you're asking us to opine on the safety of a site plan, back when 21 Parsonage came before us for an informal review, we didn't have a complete application, but we said, we all agreed as a board, you know, reduce the non-conformity." Right? I, I frankly think the, you know, the position, the location of the shed is not a compelling argument as to why a residence needs to be in that footprint. It's kind of, you know, behind the veil of this historic preservation, but everybody knows the shed's going in the dumpster. So I mean, it's a little kind of silly to say, well, that drives, it's respectful of the shed's location to then put a residence there. I don't really, I don't, I don't find that compelling in any way. And nor would I find it compelling as it drives the requirement for further, for more and more variances. And obviously, the goal of the zoning board should always be to give the least amount of variances possible to achieve the result.
Well, I think that's actually written, that's written into the chapter.
It is the code, it is the code, yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the goal, so.
About, about this though, that, so they've sent this to us and they're asking us to provide them what I think is a pretty substantive dissertation on some important issues that I don't feel professionally qualified to answer. And, I mean, and I, is this, is this something that like triggers our, then hiring a planning consultant to...
I, I, I don't thi, I don't think so.
To provide this?
I don't think so, because I said, we, this is not what we provide. We're not gonna provide you statistics with respect to the mortality rate of, you know, driveways to the left or the right. And I said, you can get a consultant to do that, and you can get another consultant to give you a different report. Right? The reality of it is, it's who's paying who, and what, what, and what kind of data can you, can you provide? I said, I think the, the one thing that we can all hang our hat on, and more importantly, speak to if there are any issues, is the, is the bulk conformance in the zoning tables, right? That's conforming side yard, a conforming rear yard, the front yard, the street's not gonna complain, right? You're gonna get the setback for the front yard that the Village, you know, the Village and the applicant want, that, you know, that is, that is in keeping with the, with the, with the rhythm of the street. And the street's not impacted as a, you know, as a user, as a, you know, their quality of life. So I mean, I think that, so what they came back with, even after our meeting with us, was nothing changed. They left the shed where it is. And then they parked the car right up, right about...
So they want to place the house in the...
Exactly where the shed was, yeah.
But I thought they were moving it towards the middle a little bit to, to...
Well, we were asked to give an opinion, and I said, I, I, I'm not really comfortable with this, you know.
So are they sharing the, and I, I appreciate they're asking us for a, a second look and a se, and a formal and a set of answers to this, these questions, but, so are we being given the complete application?
The, the application is not complete, in my opinion. We do have a site plan, the only difference on that site plan, I can pull a copy of it. So we can discuss this under Board Business if the Board wants to take it up at the end of the meeting. I, I think they're kind of struggling with it, and they would like to know the Planning Board's input. I said, we'll go, so, I think if the Board is in agreement, we'll go so far as a very informal email, basically saying the same thing, which is, reduce the non-conformity. Right? You know, when you talk about, you know, a backyard that has a retaining wall and parking a car less than six feet from that door, and then having the, the curb cut right near where the occupant of 36 Pine is actually entering and exiting their house, and, and using that street parking, because they don't have any off-street parking, that, that's not a good idea. And by the way, the curb cut is already exists on the other side over by the shed. And then it's two driveways up against each other, with respect to...
This is all predicated on the, the initial radical change of actually saying that that's a buildable-sized lot, you know, before you get to that.
And that's, and that's, and that's a morass. I mean, the Village Attorney and I have gone round and round on that. I've said, "The lot doesn't exist, so don't ask me to talk about a lot." What exists is a merged lot, right, that is now 96 by 70. You want to talk about a, you, we want to talk about the fact that a, that an owner owns half of that lot. I get that, and I accept that.
It's shared.
But, the reality of it is, is when, for, the, what for zoning purposes means on a merger is that when you consider any action on that lot, you're looking at the lots combined. So for example, what is the southern side yard? Is it where their ownership ends, or is it at the end of 36 Pine, right? I, I don't, I'm, I'm, that has not been sufficiently answered for me, and I'm not entirely convinced that if you undertake variances, what, there could be an unintended consequence of, of really what you're doing is allowing two residences on one lot. Because how can, how can an underlying Board set aside the legislative action of the Village Board and either ignore or make, or make decisions in, that are counter to the legislative action? I, I don't know that, I don't know what that ultimately does, and I haven't gotten a, you know...
Did the attorney, has the attorney opined on that question?
Yeah, he, he, yes, he, he basically says that, you know, "Look, ZBA is, they, they give variances." And I said, "I understand that. They give variances on property that exists, that is defined, that where the meets and bounds, the corners are defined," right?
Wait, they don't give variances on the code, on the, on, on...
Yeah.
Well, on the...
Oh yeah, because yeah, you go to the ZBA for a code interpretation too, right? So it's pretty, but it's pretty broad.
I guess, to me, it seems, this sounds like an amendment to...
I personally think it's a legislative action. I think it's a legislative action. But that being said, I'm not an attorney, you know, I, but it would be, it would be my question of an attorney. But that's really more of a question for the ZBA. Maybe we, maybe we decide to put that in our letter to just advise them to get, you know, to get counsel with respect to, are there any unintended consequences by making decisions not understanding who is authorized to either set aside or kind of make, you know, kind of overlay on top of the legislative intent of the 67 merger, which was to reduce or eliminate non-conformity. And in the case of these two lots, it fully eliminated the non-conformity. So any action the Village takes actually creates non-conformity, so it has no...
And it impacts, and it impacts the other people who share this lot, this large lot.
And would have some sort of reliance on the information that it's merged, and therefore, I wouldn't say it's not buildable. I would say that if the four corners of these two lots, the outer corners, then, you know, the north and the south and the east and the west corners of those two lots combined are the merge, right? That if one parcel is owned and has an accessory use on it, and one parcel is owned and has a residential use on it, that's fine. And in fact, you could even improve on those and enlarge them even, based on bulk zoning conformance and lot coverage of the lots combined. They could make separate applications. But, it, my concern is, I, I, what, what I kind of struggle with is, are what you're really doing, you think you're allowing a non-standard lot, and it is, it is a substandard tax parcel, but it is no longer a substandard lot because it has been merged for the purposes of zoning. So, it, it just seems to me that I'm not sure, I, I would just have concern as to what the actual, what the action actually does, right? You know what I mean?
Would it be helpful if we have a joint meeting?
Well, I, I don't think it's our, it's not our, it's not our question to answer. It's, it's a zoning board question to answer. I'd put the, I'd put the concern to the, you know, to the, to the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor to just say, it's this, you know, let's make sure we understand this before we get too far down the path. We can decide actually if we take this up under Board Business at the end. Just whether or not we want to include any of that in the letter. But I, I think it would be helpful for them just to have a, an informal opinion from the Planning Board when, as they go into the public hearing, just to kind of understand whether or not this, you know, this theoretical site plan. And I said, I'm not, my concern with this stuff is that the more you talk to applicants, and the more you talk about projects, and it, it just, you go further down the path of them having a reasonable expectation that the project is moving forward, right? Where you're really gathering information. So I said, if, if you don't quite know things, like, I didn't want to meet with them until, I, this was presented to us as a subdivision. The lot was created by subdivision. And if it was created by subdivision in 84, then the Village created a non-conforming lot.
But it wasn't.
That's how, that's how it was presented by everyone, by the applicant, by the Board, by the, you know...
Is it still being considered in that way? Like, is that what they're...
No, the only, the only way that came out is because before it came to us, I said, I, I can't, we can't meet with them until I see the subdivision plan map. Right? Because, you know, and the same thing I asked, you know, for Karen on hers today, you know, I said, I, we should look at this subdivision. Because there's been a lot of subdivisions and recombinations at, at the original 37 Rock parcel. So you have to kind of understand, are there notes on the site plan that are relevant to what you're trying to do, right? Look, it's entirely possible in 84 that somebody created a non-conforming lot in the Village, but, and then both parties had to agree that there could be no further development. For example, on this one, if for some reason the ZBA were willing to grant variances on this lot, I, I think one thing we should advise in our formal opinion is, the, the house cannot be enlarged under any circumstances. Right? That if you're really gonna build this tiny house that's the size of a shed, we want to make sure that's not the first step to then, oh, we can't make use of it later, right? And it doesn't support, and it doesn't support use, and now needs to be expanded, right? So, those kind of things, you have to kind of, you know, plan to the extreme and make sure that we cover all this stuff. So, we'll, we'll take that on. One other thing, other adjustment we need to make to the agenda is, 15 Main has come in. Judy and I had a, just a brief conversation about some changes to the application that I, I think it'll be good for, for her to speak with us, and we'll, we'll, we'll run through that real quick.
Kind of like a workshop style.
Yep. So, old business, so we'll, we'll add you, we'll finish up with 3 Rock Street. Okay, and then we'll jump in. So, no, we do have old business, we just added Judy for 15 Main. New business, we have 3 Rock Street. It's a conversion of a single-family residence to a two-family residence. The property is actually in the R3, it's in a multi-family district up there, it's kind of next to Ford Gate, you know, and all that, so it's kind of an R3 section that's kind of tucked in there. Obviously, they need site plan approval. There's gonna be a variance from the ZBA, because the apartment is slightly below the, the required minimum livable square footage of an apartment. Okay, you wanna come up? So I asked Ann Karen, was helpful to provide, I pulled from the files, just the old site plan. One thing I just want to make sure that there, there are some, there's a lot of, a lot of easements that had to do with, it looked like when the LLC was set up, they did a recombination to give, it looks like to give more land to the house, and then create a way to get to the, the multi-unit building that has somewhere around six apartments in it. So, obviously, that's not part of the implication, the multi-unit building, or the easements, but it's important to kind of understand. I didn't see anything, and you guys can take a look if you like, on the, on the site plan, the subdivision plan rather, that, that, you know, that limited anything, there's just some talk about planters and some things that needed to be done, that are actually, none of them are actually on the 3 Rock parcel specifically. Good? That you're gonna walk us through?
Sure. Okay, so the property in this 3 Rock Street, Ann Karen, hi Sue. Thanks to meet you. Is 3 Rock Street, and it's in the R3 district. There's currently a single-family residence on the property, and we would like to create a two-family residence within the existing building footprint. There are no proposed changes to the exterior of the building. All the construction will be contained within the existing structure. And the site currently has, exceeds the required parking by one space. We're required to have two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and there are currently five spaces on the site. We, as Matt mentioned, we are going before the zoning board because the, one of the dwellings that we're creating is going to be approximately 560 square feet. The minimal, minimum livable floor area per dwelling is 600. So we're requesting a variance for that.
And I assume that's just because, I mean, it looks like you're using all existing rooms, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's basically because of the way the house is laid out, we're trying to create a very small apartment in one end of the house and maintain access. There's a pantry that is primarily utilized by the main residence, and will continue to be used by the main residence. And also, by, by grabbing 40 square feet out of that, you're, you're not really creating any usable space but for storage for the apartment. So we'd like to maintain the use of that for the main residence. And as a result, the layout kind of just logically works with existing walls. We do have some modifications because we'll have to create a fire separation, but that is doable while minimizing the construction.
Where's the entrance to the apartment?
The entrances, the 333 room. And this, this previously was a bedroom and was blocked off, so we're now opening that up, so that will be the, the entrance. That's existing, so we're not creating any new entrances.
Oh, not any penetrations, no penetration changes either.
So is that, I'm sorry, just trying to orient myself, is that facing the...
This is, this is facing the river. And your access from Rock Street comes up here, there's a circular driveway, and the parking is all over here. So the river, the house kind of looks out over the river in this direction. And the site plan kind of shows the orientation of the house.
So there will be openings on...
Between the two dwellings? So there will be access between the dwellings. Right now, there's, there's a hallway and the door between the, the existing, this end of the house. And the kitchen is through here. So we're actually gonna create a separate, this will be our fire separation, we'll have a fireproof door here. Correct, yeah, we're adding the door there. So that way you still can still get from one dwelling to the other, even though that's not a requirement.
And is, it's a separate rental unit, it's a long-term rental, or is it an accessory apartment to the house?
It's a separate long-term rental. I mean, the, the immediate goal will be for caregivers and quarters, but ultimately, it will be a long-term rental.
So it's not gonna be Airbnb or, you know, those kind of things, because people are, a lot of people are doing that, sort of, on the side.
Yeah, a lot of, all municipalities, really pretty much everywhere grappling with that now. It's not, it's not directly addressed in our code, the Village Attorney believes they're not allowed under our code because it's silent, that's his interpretation, you know, so...
So the intent is for it to be a separate long-term dwelling?
Okay.
Can I...
And access, we don't even have accessory use apartments in our code, they really roll up to the same thing as a rental.
Mystery revealed, sorry. It answered itself.
So, with respect to Seeker, with the new changes of January 1, and I confirmed with John, the Village Attorney, it definitely, it's a type 2 exempt, so there's no coordinated review, no further review. So you filled out the form, that's it. In fact, I don't think you need the form. But we've got it, which is always good to have something in the file. It used to be, which actually I kind of liked, the old ver, the old Seeker rules where that if something was adjacent or in a historic district, it had to be a coordinated review, and it kind of made sure that you didn't miss anything. Because it's really just filling out a form and making sure, submitting, it takes a little bit more time, because obviously you have to circulate. But at least you kind of knew that you weren't getting it wrong, because most of our applications are in or adjacent to a historic district. Right? Because historic district is so large. And certainly, the stuff that the Planning Board sees, which is predominantly commercial, is, is most likely gonna be in the historic district. We see multi-family obviously as well, so, but now it's changed as of January 1, so it's a type 2 exempt, so there doesn't need to be a coordinated review. So there's no waiting for circulation and waiting for, you, it will have to go... No, does this have to go for a 239?
Because, no, no, no.
It's too far away, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you say it doesn't have to be coordinated, does that mean you act on it as the Planning Board and the zoning Board acts on it separately?
No, you basically declare it an exempt action, there's no seeker to be done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So type 2 exempt, because, I mean, you can kind of look and say, I mean, certainly, as you know from the Seeker mapper, there's the protected species, there's all, but you're not doing anything that really triggers any of that, right? So, yeah, in a type 1, where it's fully coordinated, all the Boards have to figure out who's gonna be lead, you have to circulate and say, do we all agree with who's gonna be lead? And then you have to, then you have to wait, you know, for the, for the clocks to run out and all of that. But when it's type 2 exempt, there's no further, there's no further review. You basically declare it as type 2 exempt and you're done, so seeker's done.
Excellent.
So that makes it easier, exactly. Yeah, done is a lot better. I mean, I, I, like I said, it's, but you still need to be careful. And what I do is I typically just, I typically send it to John and just say, "Do you agree this is a type 2 exempt?" And he replied back, "Yes, I would say this is type 2 action under Seeker. The application is subject to criteria, two families, three zones, subject to site plan review of the Planning Board, located in local, but not national, looks like the applicant meets the full requirements, but if not, used into a non-conforming building, staying the same size is permitted. They need more parking, but they have plenty of room, and obviously, you're adding, you're showing the parking, right?"
Correct, yeah.
The only issue is the, is the size of the second dwelling unit, which we're already aware of, that's why you're referring to the ZBA. So yes, he agreed that it's a type 2 exempt, so...
So this is the entrance, you get in from here?
The main house.
That's the entrance to the main house, and the entrance to the second dwelling.
Oh, from the back, that's from here, under the...
Well, up there, two steps up, but this is the existing plan, we do have to do a slight modification, this is a building code issue, but...
Okay, so, but, you come in, you go this way, and then you turn around to the back.
The parking is right here, actually, so it's a very easy access.
So you're, you're showing 5, right?
Yes.
And you're just gonna, you're gonna keep that dirt, or?
Yeah, there are no proposed changes, we want to kind of keep the site exactly as it is and do, okay, I will say...
Okay. I don't have any further questions, anybody? I mean, I think we have enough, we scheduled a public hearing. We'll need a couple of weeks to notice. We like to notice for two weeks in the, two versions of the paper, so if we get it in...
Have to get it next Monday, right?
This coming Monday? John'll have to write the notice, though, I don't know if we can get a notice tomorrow.
Well, actually, wait, are notices, do notices go on Tuesday?
Yeah, he could write it tomorrow, she has some other big deal. When is that, I don't remember, Monday publication deadline, so I know.
I thought notices were, I thought that they were Tuesday?
Well, it can't be Tuesday, because the paper goes to print, it's, it's circulated on Wednesday.
Oh, it's Monday. Okay, so it's...
It's either Friday or Monday. It might be Monday at 10:00, do you remember? The legal notices?
I know for letters, it's Monday.
So you're scheduling a hearing two weeks from now, is that what you're trying to do?
I mean, we, we probably have enough, we do have enough time actually to do it the next meeting, but we won't hit, yeah, we will hit two issues, well, no, we won't.
No, not for the net, we'll, we'll only have...
No, we will hit two.
Well, if we get it in next week...
Yeah, it's just, it will be the Wednesday.
Wednesday, and then the day before.
Yeah, and the day before the hearing, yeah. So that's fine, so we can go ahead and schedule it. So that's, I don't have a calendar for, where's my, yeah, my phone.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, so it'll be the 25th. Yeah, so it'll be the twenty-fifth. And I, and I think it's fine because you, have you put the, the notice up for the ZBA? Yeah, so I think that's fine. I mean, I think the, the public already has sufficient notice to know that the, that the.
Go check off the planning board box next week.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, just check it off and then, because obviously there's very little happening here with respect to planning. It's really the ZBA who's really doing the, the, is ruling on the variance for the, for the substandard livable square footage. We're really just kind of approving site plan and there's so many, there's so little modification. You're basically just creating five dirt parking spaces, you need four. It's in the R three, it's an allowed use. There's accessory apartments, like I said, aren't in our code. And it's not an accessory apartment, it's an actual, it's actually creating a two-family, a two-family.
But it's permitted?
Which is allowed to use, yeah, in the R three, so, okay. Very good. So Karen, who is incredibly organized, has already given us the neighboring properties. Wow, so you want to, this is who you're noticing even for a ZBA?
Yeah, so actually I added a few. So the ZBA looked at this and I, initially on my list, I just had the properties circled in green. And I added these just because these two properties are owned by the same owner. So I didn't, I don't wanna seem like it would be inappropriate to exclude the next neighbor. So I expanded the list, so this was the list that I sent for the ZBA if that's the same.
Yeah, so go ahead and I'll email John tonight and just ask him if he could just write up the notice. I have him do the notice just so we're, everything is always aligned.
Yep.
That's good.
And then you'll email it to me.
And then we'll get it to you. On the off chance that we missed the Wednesday paper, the code only requires one week. We like to do two weeks, but since there's already notice in the paper about this thing being under application and then the sign on the street, I think the signs are great and I'm thrilled we finally got to them.
Oh, great, yeah.
That really just makes everybody kind of, it gives you constructive notice to basically say, you know, you had noticed that something was going on and you need to kind of, you know, speak now or hold your peace. And so I think the signs are very helpful with that because we had so many people saying, you know, I'm not reading legal notices and, you know, and who is, and, you know, and some people I'm sure, but. All right, good, so you'll.
So I'm gonna offer a practical note on the signs, and I mentioned this to Jeff, but they're basically like screwed to a wooden stake, but it's really, really hard to get into the ground sufficiently. So something just to discuss with the village is maybe like those metal holders, like that real estate people use that can be driven in.
And political signs.
Yeah, because if they're basically.
Just the wire ones are easier to get in on a stake, a stake's very hard to get in.
One of these like bearing strips.
No, but they're, but they're, but they're foam cord, they're the plastic that have the cells. They can actually accept the wire.
Right, so anyhow, that's something to discuss amongst yourselves, but I ended up duct taping the sign to the mailbox because I couldn't get it in the ground, so.
I know that the folks on Chestnut lashed theirs with zip, zip strips to their fence, so.
Oh, that's not a bad idea, yeah.
So I think make it easy on people if you're gonna, because there isn't always a place to tie it to something, so.
Right, yeah. Very good.
You do need like a big mallet for that, because of the bearing strips.
And Rock Street probably can be impossible to block everything.
Yeah, the ground's probably good and frozen now too. All right, thank you again for bringing the subdivision plat maps. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
Have a good night. Okay. Come on down.
Did, yes, I know our guys emailed you something.
I don't know, did you change her?
Oh, let's see, just today Laura Bergman, the owner, came by and said, can we modify this? So let's see what you have on your file and then we'll go from there. So I'm orienting so that, I guess, when you're looking at the fifteen Main Street, this is, this is the front. And so previously we had proposed to purchase this sidewalk to put this front stoop. And the village board was not too thrilled about that idea. They said their intent on letting people buy sidewalk is just for the access to the building. So let's, if you have a front stoop that already exists or you have, you know, difficulty getting to your building with ADA access, that's when they would allow it. And so, so we thought about this and we, we originally thought that, you know, we would use this as a carport because our intent was that this was going to be an apartment. And when we were talking with village board, like, you know, what is our solution? You know, ADA ramp, flood plain, and then there's also the, so, what was it? ADA ramp, flood plain, and I'm forgetting, the parking, parking.
Well, there was the parking.
Right, so those are the three criteria that we're trying to meet in all in one place. And we said, well, we can't fight the flood and, you know, we should really provide ADA ramp if possible. And in the front, it just wouldn't fit. It, it really encroached on the sidewalk.
You'd have to do a lift. You'd have to do a chairlift.
And the chairlift doesn't look great, so we were trying, oh, and the architectural feature, you know, like we were trying to make it look nice.
Right, aesthetic.
And so, so village board asked us, what can we do to minimize the need for the, the sidewalk purchase and resolve everything? And so we said, okay, we have to, if we had to give up something, then it's the parking. So if we give up the parking, then we're treating this all as commercial. And so then, then this becomes bed and breakfast kind of arrangement and there's a cafe. So that way we're not obliged to have a parking there. And so Laura's like, you know, I, I could live without looking at the back of a car, you know? And I would rather put in an ADA ramp. So then when we try to put in an ADA ramp, this became the solution. So you have to go up there, land, and you can't have ADA people go through the back door. And so then you gotta come around and go through the front door. So you can't discriminate.
It's not unusual, yeah.
Yeah.
To have a switchback.
So, so, and, and also, you know, if we are making the people who are living here have to go through all of this and have to kind of crisscross, we thought, okay, maybe if it's not a permanent residence, then it, it all goes together. You know, let's say if this was your home, then you wouldn't want the commercial crowd, you know, going through that space. So I said, okay, maybe this is all coming together and that the stoop that we would need is just this much because of the flood. You know, we, we are requiring this because we're trying to mitigate the flood. So, so Laura would like it just to use that with as a kind of welcoming steps into her cafe, the.
Where, which way are the steps oriented?
It's now, people, people are approaching this way.
This is the Main Street.
Oh, those, oh, these are steps, I thought there were, I saw there was railing, so I'm flat, okay, got it.
Yeah, so they're going up this way, sorry, for all the hatching and, and nests. So in other words, we're taking that section and making it a little wider so that we can get the landing in there to get there. It's a tricky one.
So, um, so the, does this require, so this will require setback variance, yeah?
The, the.
The steps.
Yeah.
And, and so this is now a cha, is this a change of use for a B, this would be a change of use for an Airbnb? And.
Yeah, it's, it's. Originally was a, a bar cafe or something, no?
No, 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 so it's, no, what it is now is, is office, right? Because it's a yoga studio, so it's a change from that to multi-use of food service and, and bed and breakfast.
Yeah, and no cooking, it's just, you know, sandwiches and.
Yeah, any food service, yeah, whether or not there's cooking, yeah, not a restaurant, but, yeah. So that it basically, you're just calculating parking by number of seats. And then the, the bed and breakfast room requires one parking space.
And it's one, one room, the B and B?
Let's see, there's, I mean, one room and then possibly if we can squeeze in a little extra, but it's.
But it's one rental unit.
One rental, yes, and.
Oh, right, oh, okay, got it, one, one.
And it's all one level, we're not going another level. We are replacing the roof here to match because of the ceiling.
And are you, are you extending the roof over the front?
We looked at that and architecturally we couldn't make it look good because this space and that building straddling the two was a little awkward. So we may, if we have, we may have a little cantilever thing here, we're trying to resolve that. If not, nothing, no coverage.
Okay, and the lot is, um, this, this sits edge to edge, right, for the lot?
Almost, yeah, almost. There's a little room here, a little room here, but it's pretty much built to the edge, yeah.
So you're, so you would have, you'd have a setback for, you'd have setback for yours, for the stoop and this landing? And you would also have an area variance if you were changing the roof coverage?
Roof coverage, we're not changing the roof coverage, oh, here, oh, here.
So if you're, if you're extending the roof out, you're gonna need to be addressing that.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we couldn't make architectural statement that covered both because this is, it's got a strange roof.
End gable, right?
Yeah, and so.
Are you raising the roof? I know you're raising the floor.
Just the back, just the back, we have a ceiling height challenge in the back because it's, for some reason it's lower.
So will it be like two gables, split gables or you?
It is, it is currently split gable, but we're just raising the back to match the front.
Oh, right, to match the front?
Like a single, a single ridge beam.
Got it, okay.
Right, yeah.
Or.
And you're, and you're not raising the front, even though your flooring is gonna be.
Right, we have plenty of ceiling height here.
They're raising four joints, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and it will be concrete because of the flood and, uh, what's the other word? And we're creating like a tub, concrete tub.
Right, okay. And there, there, and there would be parking requirements for the.
Yeah, so basically it would just be a parking table that would be resolved with parking waivers.
With a parking waiver, because it's B one.
Waivers, yeah.
Oh, waivers, right.
Yeah, you know, for the restaurant based on the number of seats and then plus one for the, for the short-term rental unit.
Right.
And she, she said she will have parking on her street for this customer, so.
I think that's independent of the application, yeah, because the application wouldn't really, wouldn't really, wouldn't really recognize, you know, parking.
First, because it's right on a some.
And also they, one could be sold and one could be, you know, so it really has to, the application has to exist on its own.
Yeah.
And the, the whole intention of the parking waivers was to allow for, you know, the, the change of use on, you know, on the commercial, the commercial res, the commercial businesses on Main Street and the B one and the B two. So that's what they're, that's what they're, that's what they're for, so.
If it's a, if it's a bed and breakfast, is that, is cooking facility in the bed and breakfast permitted?
All of our, it, it can be, but they're not cooking.
Right.
They're not putting any ovens or.
We have full kitchen in the apartment.
Oh, no, no, that's.
There's more cooking happening in the resident.
Right, right, wait, well.
It's a cook your own breakfast, bed and breakfast.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm interested in now is that we're, you know, architecturally, we're resolving this issue around the park, we're sacrificing the parking that would have been dedicated to the use of a residential unit. And we're saying, no, instead we're gonna turn it into a B and B. But the, but the revised illustration is the same as a residence, you know? And so I think that the, the idea is that it's not a, yeah, I, I mean, I think that we, we wanna be, we wanna be looking at this as a B and B, not as a, oh, this is just a fudged, long-term, you know, residential situation that just doesn't have to provide, that gets a parking waiver, right?
No, 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 they, they'll update, Judy will update the application, the, 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 you know, they'll update the referral, right? To basically say that it's a refer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that this was it, I guess I'm.
No, 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 we're, no, 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 we just wanted to workshop it really quick. I, I had spoken to Judy just informally and I said, it's probably best to come in and speak with the board to make sure everybody's on the same page. I said, but as far as I, I don't see any issues with this and it resolves a lot of the issues, the, you know, that are. One thing it also resolves too is you don't lose a street parking space with a curb cut.
Right.
Right, you know, you don't have to disturb the trees, you don't have to, the village board, you, Stephanie was at the meeting, you weren't at the meeting. It was very clear that there, an unintended consequence that they didn't really kind of foresee with the sale of these lands was that then people would build a structure, right? A permanent structure and then possibly enlarge, have the ability to enlarge. Because obviously the boards are autonomous, so you could go to the ZBA and get a variance for a front yard setback and then you could go to, you know, go to the HDRB and get it approved and then you've increased the square footage of the building. And that's not the, the intent of the legislative body. The intent of the legislative body in the village board was simply just to provide safe, clear access to your space. And then also if you wanna do, I mean, our seasonal dining code doesn't really exist, but say if you wanna put up furniture at least just to be able to sit there in the, in the summer, because obviously the cafes are gonna be much busier in the summer and so you want some expanded seating or waiting. But, but their, but their intention was not to, to allow for the expansion of the footprint of buildings. And they realized they can't control that because obviously then the boards are autonomous and you go to the ZBA, go to the HDRB and they say, yeah, yeah, and then all of a sudden then you've got, you've added, you know, several hundred square feet to the front of, and, and changed the plane of, of the buildings. This building lines up, the, the front plane of it lines up exactly to the commercial building to the left. It also lines up to the residential buildings, but the residential buildings obviously have the porches.
Right.
But the porches don't exist on the commercial buildings, at least right there. Across the street, obviously Hudson House, the whole front is porch. You know, so it's not like it's unprecedented, but Carolyn's Flowers, I think, is a good example where they're gonna sell the stoop, they're gonna sell it, but Carolyn's Flowers had, very similar to this, a small covered stoop. I think theirs was covered, yeah, theirs was definitely covered. You know, so it, I think where they, where there's precedent, where they exist, I suspect probably what they'll do is they'll probably just add easements and basically talk about, you know, you know, that the, that they're, that they're being sold to provide access and be, and not to provide, not to, not to erect permanent structures. So, so that being said, did you, are you gonna, you're gonna look to close on that and then finalize everything?
Yes, so what we're, what we're trying to do is get everybody's opinion, all the board's opinion, and then go back to village board and say, we, we found a solution that can make everybody happy. Because we didn't wanna lock ourselves into, let's say, this, but then HDRB says, well, it would have looked better if we did X, you know? Then I'm back asking for more space.
For this thing here, you're adding the stoop here. But if you have the, originally, we, we went the other day just to look at it. This is gravel or whatever. And then if you're gonna have a entrance or something here, why don't you just have the ADA thing directly here instead of going up and down again?
Well, so we, we, I asked the client, can we have a side door? She goes, it's a business, you know, it, it's kind of awkward to have a side door and not, you know, she wants some sort of street, inviting street presence, you know?
Yes, but, but you have this front door. And then with an entrance here, which is not used very often. And then that could avoid a lot of problems here and here and here if you have.
But, but those are, are the, I'm sorry, are those windows?
These are windows, oh, yeah.
Those are not yours, and she said that the, the ADA entrance cannot be secondary. It has to be, it can't be a.
But it doesn't seem, I don't think it's a secondary entrance.
If you're, if you're landing at the same place.
If, you know, you have two, one door here, one door here. If you look at the French restaurant there, they said, okay, if you wanna get a zap, zap, and then the entrance is, from the side street is from anywhere, because there are times that you are limited for, by certain things.
The, well, the one, the, the one concern that I would have here is that you can go tumbling off this, right? Typically. Typically, when you have a ramp for ADA, it has to be enclosed on all sides. So you could make, you could try to make this turn, this probably, when you go to do your turn radiuses, I bet it doesn't work.
Well, I was looking at this, I have to say, I did propose to her that we go up the sideways so that this is all guard rail.
Yeah, yeah.
And she's like, it just is not inviting, she was, she was unhappy with that.
I don't agree, actually, I actually, that if, it would be better if you were gonna, if you're bothering to do this.
Right, right.
If you extend it and you're, and you're appealing, you know, permission to purchase this area for an approach, making it wider and having, having the, you know, the approach be sort of here.
Right, right.
I don't know.
Yeah, she saw the three D railing, she's like, that's tricking me, you know, it is, it is true that this is more inviting.
Yeah, but if you have this and then you have the ramp coming down.
But I do think you have to have a barrier.
Yeah, and then you have the ramp coming down here and then turn around, that's gonna be more dangerous to me.
You know what, you're actually, you're right, we don't have turnaround there.
So therefore, that's what I'm saying, why don't you change this?
And just go in here.
Into a, into a smaller side door.
Well, what you could do is you could just do a, just a motorized door here that opens out.
Which, where the motor.
Anywhere, like here, so that way you don't lose, if it opens in, then you lose more, you have to have the swings of these doors. But if it's literally just a, you know, a, you know, the, the motorized that you hit to open the door, that it, this one wouldn't need to be motorized then, and this one would only be in use when you had an ADA customer that pushed the button and then the door opens up. And obviously, people don't get past them while they're going in and out anyway. I don't know if that meets code, but then you don't have to deal with how do you keep them from tumbling off these, these, this whole thing is gonna have to be enclosed, I think.
And this, this thing goes to be really complicated, and then, you know, when you have that, it's not attractive if you have it up and then turn around and come down again, and then turn around into the door.
Yeah.
That's, I, I, I think if you have a side door here, that solves a lot more problems. Than, uh, than, 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 than this, because the stoop coming out, it's sticking out from the street anyway. It's, it, you know, people walking through and they have to turn around to try to avoid this thing.
Well, there's a stoop right here, the neighbor's stoop, it comes out to here, so this is, this is really, um.
Yeah, we, we walked through the other day, I think in, in summertime, if you have an extra table and things are around along here, it's gonna be very attractive instead of something sticking out. I, to me, I think it's, it's a lot more attractive than, than, uh.
Well, well, I mean, that's obviously, that's not our purview, but I mean, we definitely do wanna, you know, I mean, and obviously you're a licensed architect, so you're gonna have to deal with this.
Yeah.
You know, this, um, the safety with respect to navigating this without going off the edge.
Yeah, this just happened just today, you know, midday, and I didn't get a chance to think that, I, I said, I did say, this doesn't seem enough, but then I was looking at the corner, not thinking that we gotta make a turn here also. So you're right, that doesn't work, so, I mean, I had asked her if we could put a side door and she's, she preferred just one door, but, you know, so what you're thinking is, what we do have to have a landing. I tried, you know, putting the ramp up this way, um, but we need a let, so if I were to flip this, so if I had a landing here, got up, then I'm, I'm, I need a landing, you know, in order to get in here. I can't start a ramp down here to get my landing there, you know, so it's, it was tight, tight thing, so that's why we, and.
No, I think you're, I think you're pretty close, and obviously, like I said, we're comfortable, cause we've got a licensed architect on it, you're the one that has to deal with, you know, can they navigate this safely, and if not, then obviously you kind of can eliminate that by, you know, maybe an outswinging door here, assuming that's allowed by code, that's just used for ADA access, and then it's basically, you know, the, you know, the, the, the fenestration could kind of, you know, kind of mirror the windows or, or whatever you're trying to do.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're not gonna, you know, tell you how to design, but just, just with concerns about life safety.
I'm glad that it's, uh, that you've accommodated the ADA.
Yeah, I, we're happy with it, um, so then if we cut that there, I mean, I know she was also looking at, you know, um, this, making architectural use so that she didn't wanna have a void and, and so she wanted this to have some sort of purpose. So if I cut that off and that is, so that's a front entry, so that we just limit our front stoop to here, I mean, village board would be very happy.
Right.
So.
And then that makes your life a lot easier with this ramping thing here, I, uh, personally, I would, I wouldn't do this one. Cause you're just thinking being built this, and then you got your landing and you turn around, so this whole place is useless, just for the ramp.
Well, I think she, she's trying to think of something lively, you know, something inviting.
You don't have this bit here, all this, you can have some other things. Maybe you have some extra tables for summer, I don't know what, but there are definitely more things than just two ramps.
Well, you can't put anything there that's part of the access.
Well, the simpler, really simple solution was to just put the ramp here and enter here, but then that's discriminatory. You know, that's, that was the problem, um.
No, but.
So.
But I think you have plenty to go, I think you have plenty to go on, man, and I think that, I, I don't, we, we don't see any issues with the application, obviously, like I said, you're the architect.
Yeah.
You're gonna deal with whether, with the, with the ADA compliance with respect to safe ingress and egress.
Yeah.
Um, the parking waivers, there's, you know, obviously we're not, the village board ultimately grants parking waivers based, they take our recommendation and we, I don't think we've recommended one, they haven't, um, haven't granted, but past performance is no.
Well, it's, I mean, it simplifies, we, we don't cut the tree and we kept, we keep the street parking, which is, you know, we were supposed, we were.
You had one, yeah.
We had to let, one to get this one, and so, uh, so I think that's a good compromise in that sense. So we just have to figure out that, and then this, the, uh, yeah, the ramp going this way alone was not helpful, because we didn't want ADA access to enter into bathroom. Um, so, and if we enter, say, sideways, I think that's close enough, you know, um.
Is there a distance, is there some sort of criteria, uh, for the discrimination?
It's from three feet away versus five feet away, or? You know, I think they were, I don't remember verbatim, all I know is that they, they were supposed to get to in the same entry, but I mean, I, I think that's close enough. She, she didn't want multiple doors, um, if she, she didn't need them, you know.
That's what I'm saying, if you, if it basically services the same, if it's basically serviced by the same vestibule and you don't really lose anything to circulation or to,
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I don't know if you're allowed to have it outswing when it's motorized, but the fact that it's an ADA door, there's probably an allowance for that. Right, that there's a paddle that you hit, the door opens up, person enters and it closes, and it's not a door that's gonna be in active use, really.
Right.
Right, you know, so it might save you some space and some.
Do you need pocket doors?
Except, yeah, flooding, we can, well, well, yeah, I know, it's tough.
Yeah.
Tough, 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 um.
No, actually, there probably are commercial doors like that, I mean, they're, but you'd have to get enough clearance, oh, you could, you, you could probably do a glass accordion door.
Oh, well, barn doors.
Yeah.
Air tightness.
Barn doors.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, um, she would also like this to be energy efficient.
Right, yeah, you're not gonna get that to coordinate doors.
No.
All right, so, I think we're close, so.
But I, yeah, but I think you're, yeah, but I think you're close, I think that you can, um, I don't think there's any challenges that we, that I really see with respect to.
We're just giving some suggestions, save some trouble.
Yeah.
I know, construction goes forever, summer is coming.
And then light fixtures, cause I know we, we had talked about that, that you would be interested in seeing them. So she fell in love with light fixtures that she saw in one of the antique shops in, in the village. So this is what she's proposing on each side of the front door. Um, and then for, and then other outdoor lighting would be here. And we just thought, thought something discreet LED.
Right.
Um, but it's really, it might be between the, the rafters and some, and it won't be white, you know, bright white, it would be, um, like a warm tone, uh, if, if possible. Yeah, so that's, that's our intention for there.
And obviously, the few, the vintage fixtures, obviously it's full cutoff, right, I mean, it's basically it's got a hood on the top.
Right, it's, it, there's no, um, I mean, I don't know if this is considered full cutoff.
Yes or no on these things, historical boards will say yes or no.
Well, you know, the look of it, yes, but actually, the lighting plan is something the planning board looks at, and, you know, we'll eventually, if one code update finishes their work, have a lighting, we don't have lighting codes, so you can really kind of overlight or underlight, overlighting is, is a real problem.
So this is full cutoff, I, I, I think full cutoff is that you don't see the light source, isn't it?
Full cut, it's just not going, it's not throwing up, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, but it's, I, I, you, you, you know, I mean, you're not.
It's an, it's historic, I don't know, and, and she, I'm not sure, and so, that's what she, she would love to do here.
Yellowish colored lights.
Yeah, and code updating is looking, but right now, we have no lighting codes, so, you know, but we do still look at the plan. Although the comprehensive plan, which I'm sure you've looked at, basically talks about full cut fixtures and about, you know, eliminating, you know, light, light solution and,
Yeah.
You know, and all those things, which obviously we, we obviously, you know, direct the applicant to try to have, to comply to their best ability to the, to the comp plan.
Okay.
Okidok, very good.
Our next step is then, um.
You may hang on to one of these for the file?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Okay, and this is also for, you know, I only brought one copy, uh, because it just hot off the press and.
Okidok, great, yeah, no, I think you're, I think you're good, and then when you're, when you're ready to come back, just let us know, um.
And then we'll, we'll go through the, do we have, so I know we have to go through the zoning and historic review board, anything else? And then we come back and just make it a formal, like, and then go for the public hearing.
I don't know, um.
In which order?
We should, let me find out from the village attorney, um, I, I don't know that this is a type one, uh, as far as seeker. Has anybody made it, no, nobody's made it determination, right, nobody's classified, um, let me find out from him.
Okay, great.
It could be a type two exempt, um, cause there's so little going on, I don't know that this really is all that meaningful, obviously, it's a commercial use to a different commercial use, you know, it's not, you're not doing any construction, you're not doing any demolition. You know, the, the, the rear roof, um.
Is the ramp, are the, the ramp and the front porch, are they, is it, is the question about their, their, uh, distance from a historic building, is that?
No, that's not gonna be us, that's gonna be the, the HDRB and your, and your, your view of that is so limited too. I mean, it's, it's viewable from a public right of way, so it's the HDRB, our, our.
Right, I was thinking of it more in terms of like in relation to the surrounding lots, you know, that it's so, like, that's construction right on the, right on the lot line with, you know, adjacent to Musk, so does that?
Well, there's already a wall here, right?
Yes.
So they're, they're still inside the perimeter, the footprint of the building, this wall already exists.
Is that considered a, a wall? That la, I mean, that, that's like an open, it's an open, it's actually not a wall, it's posts with.
With screening.
There have, yeah, screening, so is that considered the envelope? I mean, it's underneath an existing.
Well, you're gonna have to address it, cause obviously that's, I imagine you're, you're railing the side of the ramp, right?
Yes.
Cause this side is gonna be elevated, this side is gonna be.
Well, that'll go up, how far, how, how high does it go up at the back, is it going up to like eighteen or just twelve?
Oh, you mean.
The ramp.
Uh, the ramp, it goes up twenty-four inches, um.
At the back, it's all the way up to the twenty-four inch?
Yes, it'll go up to twenty-four inches, the, the current, um, fence is, I think, at, at least uh, four and a half feet or five feet, this along, and so your, your point is that we're, we may not be allowed to have ramp close to historic structure, at that part, I don't know.
Oh, no, not that you're not permitted to do it, I was, I was wondering what triggered the, um, type one. If it had, for us, if it was, if it was triggered by how close the construction was to the.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll ask the village attorney, just to, just to give us an opinion as to whether or not it's a type two or type one. And then if it is a type one coordinated, then we would just figure out who would be lead agency, and I would think probably the most impactful things are probably the HDRB. You know, that basically that the building's gonna be rehabbed and it's, I assume you're gonna do some, something to make it look historic, it certainly doesn't now.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, how are you, how are you, how are you thinking that up?
The biggest changes, lanterns.
Old lanterns, yeah, old, ye olde lantern, yeah. What's the exterior, what are you guys imagining, revisioning for your exterior, for the siding and, and then, and then you sort of re, reclaim it and make it beautiful?
Well, it's, it is a concrete structure and so, and it, we have very little room.
Yeah, to apply anything.
Apply much, and so we were going to just do, you know, along the alleyway, stucco, stucco and, you know, stucco. And, and most likely stucco here, the, um, uh, because it was, the, there wasn't enough room to keep building up, you know, like a rain screen, um, siding. The, so the window, we were going to just clean it up and just rectangular, you know how we, we have this, this.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot going on, you know.
Historical thing was a look at.
It's a little muddled.
So we were gonna just do one rectangular window, um, she wants operable, uh, but it definitely, um, um, just clean, cleaner look is what she's looking for, and just clean door, now she's proposing glass because she wants people to feel invited, not a solid door. Um, so there's just two elements here and then this guy, and.
Would, would that be a transom? And how is it, when, when you say operable, how, in what way would it be operable if it were a very large window going across?
Because, yeah, and sliding is up, functionally, like sliding is best, but I don't know if historic review board would allow us, but, um, but she does not like tilt in windows. And she didn't want windows to hit, hit you back up.
Right.
Yeah, they can't swing it, they can't.
Yeah, or you can't swing out.
Use our window.
So we were like, we're stuck with.
Use our window, you can't tilt from the outside.
Right, right, the tilt and slide, that's what we were thinking, something, but I don't know if historic review board would like that.
We can't help you there.
All right.
But Will is yours as a president.
But that didn't come from the planning board.
Not in the historical board, yeah, sorry.
Yes, exactly, anyway, well, thank you.
Excellent, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Then, if I can get it, so, I mean, we can just see who we can talk to, but in terms of order of approval, I got a little bit mixed up because, I, before, we thought it was planning board and then historic review board, but it's, and then, but the zoning board is now coming in, so, um, planning board, zoning board, and then historic review board. And then final approval from the village board or village board.
Zoning board for the variances that you're gonna need for, uh, coverage and setbacks. And then you, you need to resolve the purchase of the, of the.
Sidewalk first before we go through all the formal process.
Actually, actually, you have to purchase the sidewalk before any of the boards can approve a plan, cause you have to, that has any construction or improvement on the property that you're planning, that you don't own now.
Well, there's, there's a few things.
Yeah, so right now, we're just going through a workshop stage and see what is, what would be required to make everything look great and meet everybody's needs, including billing department, and so, uh.
You know, I think you purchase this stoop, you'd go to zoning for the variance. And that way, then you know exactly what you're working with with respect to the HDRB, as opposed to having to backtrack to the HDRB. And in parallel, you could probably go to, you know, you could go to HDRB and planning at the same time, because by then you've already established the site. Right, or you would finish with HDRB and then come to planning last.
Right.
Um, it's change of use, so unfortunately in our code, or fortunately, uh, the, the public always has input on change of use, we have to do a public hearing. Um, so, um, you know, so we would have to do a separate public hearing, but, yeah, it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay, okay, all right, so, so in terms of workshop, uh, we'll go, um, for zoning next. I mean, since it's workshop, it's just a matter of, of opinion, and then once we finalize what sidewalk we're purchasing, proposing to purchase, then we'll go and to the village board, get that first, and then make it formal with zoning, and then make it formal with HDRB and planning, and then we'll go for a public hearing, I mean, I know we'll hit about multiple public hearings. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Take care, thanks, Judy, have a good night.
Good night.
Alright, so.
Uh, I have a question, um, I don't know it's related to what, but remember Market Street? When they came in, they applied to build a garage or something?
Which?
From last year, Market Street.
Thirty-five Market?
At the train station.
Yeah.
And then they're building something, every day I'm looking, there, it's a huge thing now, it's not a garage, it's like an apartment.
Which, the one, the one on the street or the one behind the?
The one behind the carriage house, you're thinking of.
Yeah, they had it, they, I mean, yeah, so basically you should go to the they're they're aware of it, the the village board is aware of it. Uh, HDRB has been made aware of it, they gave them the variance, I think to raise, they gave them an approval, certificate of approval to raise the roof, I think a couple of feet, it looks like it went up a lot more than a couple of feet.
It it, it, it looks like a house, it really.
What was the house?
It was, it was a.
It was a small Greek revival house.
Yeah, but they said it's gonna be a garage or something, I, because that's one of the first meetings I came as a a a board member.
The approvals that they got, um, were not, it wasn't, the approvals they got weren't for building a garage, it's, there's a, it's a, it's living quarters, and it's a, it's a, it's a house attached to the back.
But, but it's, whatever they're doing, it's a huge thing, and it's right at the street. With this, this really, right at the street.
No, that's the carriage house.
The carriage house is is on the street.
When you go here, when it, when you turn towards the train station, it's a Market Street right here, they have existing pretty modern looking, you you call it a garage, you call it whatever they are, they they look pretty modern. Uh, dark color and so on, and then it's their entrance. And then here comes the rocks and stuff right along the street, right there facing somebody, it's really basically in your face, that thing.
The board and batten, the rebuilt board and batten house, the the little, the little house, is that what you're thinking?
It's not a little house.
You're thinking of the gray house that they took down and reconstructed.
Okay, well, the original is this, now it's this, huge. I'm, every time we go through, I say, what are they building? I've, I've, you know, that that was definitely not what I understood what they were building.
Did you check the plans or?
I I didn't check the plans, but this is, that's, I'm just saying, well, you know, it really is big. And then it's construction going on forever.
You can speak to the building inspector to see if it complies with what was filed.
Okay.
He's just up at the town.
Okay.
At the building department's own building.
Yeah.
Well, they have no building now, so, um, the, it does look like it got larger, it's hard to tell when these things get reconstructed.
Okay, uh, because it's really big, I I was totally surprised, I would say, and then even my husband says, he said, I thought you guys approved something that's very small, how come it's a big building now? We said, well, certainly that's not what I had in mind, but, uh.
I don't, I also don't remember the brick, the brick additions on the left, and I don't even know what that is.
And now they're, they're digging something.
Well, the bricks, that that actually is, was there.
Oh, was it?
There was a brick.
It's a, it's a gray thing, it it's a gray thing, you know, literally.
I I commute every day, I I know this house.
This is huge, this thing now.
Well, they they did raise the, they did raise the roof line, but only.
No, that's the Greek revival, the.
The, um, the, but the little one.
The one that ultimately got.
That they, the the one that was rebuilt, they.
The HDRB, I don't know, the HDR, what the HDRB said was it was a a demolition and a reconstruction of the same building, right?
It's not reconstruction of the same building.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
But anyway, anyway, and then they're digging something.
They're not before the board, they've got their permits, it's about enforcement.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think if you, if you feel strongly about it, and I certainly understand why you would, I would go talk to the building inspector and just say what, you know, and and then if you can, you can report back to the board, um, if you need further information or assistance in supporting that, but really at this point, I mean, they're, the village, they also did a demolition, that was always supposed to be a partial demolition, they did a full demolition without going back to the HDR.
They're completely, yeah, it's completely gone, right?
No, this is a different building.
No, oh, okay.
It's a different building, it's a building, it's the building behind the building that's not involved at all, the first one that you that you come down. Um, there's like a Greek revival, little, little structure in the back that's set back, that now looks like it's several feet taller than it was, it was supposed to be just two feet taller. It looks larger, but it's it it's hard to say too, when this stuff gets built, because, you know, once things start to have an even plane and it's all new materials, it looks different, you know, sometimes, but, yeah, I'm not, the, but definitely I would have them, if you have questions, I would just go to the village, the village inspector.
Okay, I I think, you know, that building definitely is is.
My house was painted last year and it looks bigger, so.
That's what I'm saying, once, once the, let me just grab one thing, I'll be right back.
And they start to look a little different.
I'm just gonna grab the the site plan for twenty-one parcelage.
So for for parcelage, what, is there anything we can do, because, you know, the young couple sitting there saying, she said it's her mother going to live there or some.
Well, it, yeah, maybe, so, um.
And then, and then.
The extent to which we get, are involved is we're asked to provide this opinion and we can attend the public hearing and speak, you know, as members of the public.
I think that, if I remember correctly, the the final thing is we sort of.
Well, as part of the process, the planning board reviews the appli- the complete application after it's been publicly heard.
Yeah.
And before the, before the zoning board variances are are recorded.
Yeah, but I I didn't say we recommend that, but we certainly seem to like the idea of moving the shed a little more towards the middle. Instead of sitting on the original.
We're not, it's not moving, we're not moving, they're not moving the shed, the, our recommendation was if you were gonna build on that lot, you move, you you build at a location on the lot that is the least, uh, the least in, the the most in the most is most conforming.
Right, but but right now, Matt seems to say that they want to sit at the.
Yeah, I guess they didn't, they didn't integrate any of the recommendations of the planning board into their revised application. I don't know, I haven't seen the revised application.
There's no, there's no revision.
No, no revision.
Than the carving part there, so, they, so Aaron's asking, the chair of the planning board is asking that we, that we give some sort of an opinion to assist them as they go into public hearing with this application. My preference would be that the, that they would complete the application, the the applicant would then present the 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 plan in public hearing, and then that would come to us, but he he asked again, even after we resolved that, he'd asked again, could we, you know, could we get an opinion? So, you know, I said, it's, it would have to be very informal, because, so basically, nothing really changed, they're, they're sticking to this this location of this residence somehow being driven by the location of the barn. Although I will say at the end of the hearing, when there was just so much talk about, um, about, um, about alternate, alternates to this, they said we would consider moving it. Um, and putting it anywhere on the site, so, what they did when they, but that was not, that is not what they came in with their amendments, with their, their only amendment was to then put the car.
To actually put a car on the parking spot.
A single car, they added basically a single car here, which pretty much lines up with the back door. If you look here, that's the walkway out of their house, and they use this, and then they, the, I think the homeowner parks here. You know, so this is not a great idea. Um, it it just, there's already a curb cut here, there is no curb, by the way, but there's clearly, uh, there's clearly an apron here, like an asphalt apron. This is all parking, this is all driving driveway for this house that's located back here. So, uh, you know, I mean, I think if we're gonna say anything, we would talk about, you know, returning to this. There's enough, you know, there's enough room, um, you know, to get, I'm not sure why they're looking for this variance of only a single parking space, I mean, the variances are just, you know, I mean, I, what is this actually?
Uh, but if if we give them further opinion, would they use that as at public hearing and say, well, planning board said something?
I feel like we're being asked to provide guidance on a hypothetical, this is not a lot.
Well, that, well, that's what I, well, that's what I, well, that's what I told him, I said, you're really asking us to opine, and I don't really know why. You know, so what is a lot, it's forty-eight by seventy. So it's, so they have three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. They need five thousand six hundred and twenty-five feet to be conforming.
They're, it's, it's almost, it's over a.
The intention of.
Over a third.
Yeah, it's four, it's a forty percent variance.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, I, it, it really begs the question, well, what's too small, I mean, you're, you know, you're you know, typically you talk about area variances that are in the single digits or ten percent or whatever, but I mean, to say an area variance of forty percent is to be granted, and then on top of that, a variance for parking, a variance for setbacks, a variance for.
I feel a little like we're being asked to go through the zoning board exercise of, you know, the justification? And sort of answer, answer, answer a dissertation that hasn't been provided to us, you know?
Uh, that's why I think maybe, maybe the best thing to do is just to say, we'd like to just restate what we said in our first meeting, which is if you're going to undertake this, and the, and the, and the zoning, and the planning board does not support the undertaking of this, right? You know, all these variances, be, my concern is that I don't really know what you have left. Now, John, the village attorney, will tell you that, well, you know, the applications need to be very similar or identical to then use, for people to start calling from them, and that may be true in court, obviously, he's a, he's an attorney. I don't know that these things make their way to court, you have people, you have applicants coming in and saying, you did this here, you did this here, I want this on mine, you gave it, you know, you gave a forty percent area variance, but yet you won't let me build my house on a lot where I'm twenty percent short.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, those are not identical, um, there's also this premise that, you know, that on these merged lots, the app, the the applicant's attorney had said that he had identified five of them, so he thought the impact throughout the village was quite low. When I spoke, I said, well, you're aware of Marathon, and he said, yes, I said, well, that's thirty-one lots that have merged, so I said, now, we're now up to thirty-six, and we haven't even spent that much time looking, and when there's only about eight hundred parcels, or you know, forty, or whatever it is, that's a, that's pretty material, yeah, you know, so, um, and obviously thirty-six homes, you know, with respect to the vit- the school, right, you know, which is obviously a a big part of our cost of living here, is our school taxes. You know, so, and obviously, the the taxes that you get from a house doesn't pay for the the education, it takes more money than that.
Taxes on a house on a, on a substandard lot are even less valuable. I would say that the, to to do this is in direct conflict with the action, that, I mean, this isn't, this lot is intentionally determined by the legislative action in the sixties to make this a not, a lot that would not be developed, that was the intention of that.
That, that is merged, it could be developed. Uh, in my opinion, it could be developed, but it's like this, right? So, you basically have a lot that looks like this. And this side got accessory and this side got residential. So if you have, you know, forty, you know, if you have twenty percent lot coverage and you're allowed to go to thirty, there's no reason why you can't expand your accessory use, or even expand your residential use. And they take this, which is ninety-six by seventy, and calculate your your area of it, your your lot coverage, right? So it could be developed and improved, but as far as I can tell.
Well, but not for a, not for a resident, a standalone residential, a residential lot.
You can't put two residences on one lot.
On one lot, exactly, and that is.
And many people have been denied, and many people have then gone to subdivide, you know, the town supervisor, you know, my neighbor, you know, had had then go through the exercise of subdividing, which is not a small task, right, it's not an inexpensive task.
But those were not, I mean, in that most recent one up on Morris, that wasn't subdivided into a substandard lot, that was a lot that.
Well, that's what's interesting, is that the 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 board that has the ability to create new lots, the planning board can't, could not create this lot.
Right.
Because it's a nonconforming, it it would be, it would be creating a nonconforming lot.
On the other side of the lot, there is another set of merged, merged lots, um, in one from from Meisler's.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, and there is, uh, and at one time, it might have been developed, however, the intention of this this merger was to staunch the development of these lots and staunch the infill.
To to phase out small lots.
To phase out the small lots, exactly, but but I, the intention of phasing out the small lots was to prevent further, it was, was it to prevent this kind of develop, this kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, because ultimately then you can only have one residence on the lot, so putting another residence means obviously, yes, yeah, I mean, that's one way to look at it, that you're basically developing it independently.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I don't know, look, I don't, I haven't, I I don't feel strongly that that this is something that an under, that an underboard like planning, zoning, or anybody can actually do when the legislative intent is to correct, to correct that substandard condition and to merge the lots. Um, the village attorney says that, you know, the 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 ZBA can, you know, can grant variances across the board, even on code interpretations. So, um, but everything's open to interpretation, right, you know, including legal decisions, so. So what he's asking us for, I think it's just help to get through the public hearing with respect to the planning board, and I don't know if you guys looked at the tape, but he said, you know, does mortality go by down, if you know, but if you move this driveway from here to here, so it's not really what we do, we we're not, you know, we are not licensed planners, we're, we're a planning board that understands the planning code, the intent of the code, and how to apply the code consistently across applications. Um, we're not developing planning, we're not planning the village per se. That's a different role, um, often, but often confused, right, it's often, you know, so.
Well, is it reasonable to defer, I mean, I just, I sort of feel like, I I don't, right now, there isn't it, you know, a hypothetical, if I say, yeah, i- if, if you were to grant this and it came before me and this was then a built, you know, deemed to be buildable by, you know, by virtue of a variance, the recommendation would be to observe all the setbacks and all of the
Right.
you know, and the coverage require, you know, to to make it conform.
Well, it sounds like what you're both saying is that, you know, to the extent that we say something, it gets used as direction. And we're concerned about that.
And then, and then people endorse it. And like, and say that, you know, because the the planning board said something, you know, it's like a.
It's, it's a, it's a valid concern, I mean, the more you the more you offer opinions, people then think that that's obviously a direction, and then, and no matter how informal and all the caveats you put on it, at the end of the day, you've given direction.
And I have to say.
I'm concerned that we gave direction.
That we gave recommendations and direction and they weren't taken, so I, you know, that communicates to me, I, it's not a value, I mean, it may be, it may be of interest to the zoning board, but it doesn't sound like the the people who are building are interested in that.
What, what we're trying to do, or what we are pushed to do is something that we're not feeling comfortable about, because based on the resolution or codes or whatever before, and now we are trying to go backwards and breaking that to s- to to say, okay, now, as you said, instead of, uh, things now, we're trying to create another lot to allow them to do this, which is, you know, it's not our job, but if we're agreeing on this thing, it give people the impression that seems that they can build on a separate lot.
No, I think, I I, I mean, I think you guys are, I I think you guys have, are saying pretty much the same thing, which is that anything that we say, as as informal as we say it, could be interpreted as direction and some sort of tacit approval.
Or some endorsement.
Yeah, because, because, you know, people think you as the the board.
I think that's fine, I can let Aaron know that we, you know, I, maybe I'll just write him an email to just say, the planning board is not comfortable providing any further direction, you know, cause we're concerned about how it's interpreted, um, but we can certainly restate what we said in our first meeting was that, you know, the you know, if you're gonna undertake this, I mean, we're providing no position as to whether or not you should undertake this. You know, you, you, the planning boards, the planning board's goals should always be to reduce the nonconformity and issue the least amount of variances possible, you know, and so, and like when he, when they were asking about, you know, you know, whatever, like statistics on, you know, safety, I said, I, it, I said, really, I think that the best thing that you hang your hat on is really that the code, the reason those setbacks exist is because of just that, they're, they're, that's why planning. I said, really, I think that the best thing that you hang your hat on is really that the code, the reason those setbacks exist is because of just that, they're, they're, that's why planning. Um and village planners, they come up with the grid and they do all these things, and then code gets developed as things happen and you realize it needs changes. That I, I, that I think it, you know, that they exist for a reason, and it just seems to me that if they were to. If they were to do this, um which I, I, I have concerns about because I just don't know what it means to zoning, to bulk zoning requirements. Ever again, right, because it's just, it's, it's just kind of, it's, you know, you, you start with a forty percent area variance. Then you start talking about a front yard setback, a side yard setback variance and a, you know, and then. And without question, I mean, I would certainly advise, and we can do this in our formal opinion, that there is a restriction on the, there should be a restriction on the site plan, that the place cannot be enlarged. Because the next move could then be to say, well, we can't really make use of it.
Right.
And it needs to have another bedroom.
Until we extend the, the, yeah.
And everybody's like, well, what's the difference, it's already here, which is the same kind of story for the barn, that we all knows going in a dumpster. You know, the first day that, you know, that, that they mobilized to the job site, it's, it's not likely that anybody's gonna be able to restore that. The H R B even understands its precarious position, you know, I mean, with respect to its condition, and it couldn't be used for residents anyway, it doesn't even have a foundation, I mean, it's basically, it's just, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's just on, you know, it's probably just on, you know, fieldstone or barn, you know. So, alright, so it sounds like it's two, I, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, but clearly if it's two. And one on the fence, then obviously we're not providing an additional informal opinion, and that's fine, I'll, I'll write him and I'll just say, listen, you know, we, we're not, we're not comfortable going any further with this. Beyond our, you know, our first meeting, which is basically just to stay to reduce the nonconformity, you know? Um and you'll ultimately, you will ultimately end up with the safest site plan, and more importantly, the, the most defensible site plan. I don't, I'm not understanding too.
You know, I, even that, even like, I, I actually, I, I feel, I feel uncomfortable with even.
Of taking any position.
Even restating that, you know, they, the applicant came to us, they asked us sort of, well, what do you think of it, okay, well, we, you know, that wasn't part, that wasn't a formal application before us. Right, and it was, it was like a workshop, we let them know what the sort of issues on the face of it were. But as you get into it, the, the, the whole basis for. The app, for the site plan hinges on something I don't think can be done. I don't think it should be done, because I think that it has a. Far reaching impact, and I don't, you know, John has said, oh, you can't, you can't say that you're, you, you don't wanna make the change because of. Because of a precedent that it would set, you know?
That's really more of a, that's really more of a language argument in that. You wouldn't, you wouldn't make a denial base, that, that is based upon fear of setting precedent. But it's really all in how you say it, your denial can certainly be, this does not comply with our code.
Well.
Right, in such a way that we are, that we are not comfortable granting the variance, right? And, and when you, no matter how you, you know, it, it really is arose by, you know, by any other name, really, because really. No matter what you call it, you are in fact always, always wary of setting precedent, right? Um, your, your decision shouldn't be written that way, but your logic, there's nothing that says your logic can't be concerned about setting precedent. The decision can't be that you're, you know, that you're solely basing this on setting precedent, but just enforcing your code is in many ways. A, a similar exercise, right?
Well, and enforcing the, and I, yes, it is a similar exercise, and enforcing the code in this situation protects. The neighbors who have heretofore enjoyed the.
The open space.
Reassurance of that, of that, you know, merger. To undo that is to, I think, I, I think it un, unexpectedly and without taking the app. If all of the neighbors came and we are, you know, this is a joint application, if the, if, if Sarah Gerland and her husband. Joined with these people to say, we're appealing for this, these variances because collectively we share this. This conforming lot and we, we embrace these noncon, these nonconformities. And are applying for these variances, I think that that's a more compelling discussion to give ear to. But in this case, this is, um, it's in impacting, it's radically changing and. Changing into a nonconforming lot, somebody's experience of their own lot, the neighbors, right?
Right. Yeah, no, no, without question, you have to, you have to have, you have to think about the, the greater good, right, and this, you know, because it's all. That's what zoning and code is all about, obviously, the people are, cohabing, other people are, you know, they're all living together.
Everybody's living, yeah.
You know, so the question is.
But what, what if other boards all agree? Then, let's say historical zoning, everybody say, yeah, they can, the variance is big, but they can build it, then what do we do?
The planning board then, it gets sent to the planning board for an opinion on site plan, and if they're gonna proceed with it, and their intention is to proceed with it, but they wanna ask us before they take final action. Then we would say, make it as conforming as possible, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, we see no reason why the residents, for example, for example, completely. That why the residence needs to be dictated by the four corners of this farm that's going in the dumpster.
Yeah.
Um, I would say personally, or professionally rather, that the driveway should, should share the common boundary. Because that way then you're not mixing, you know, pedestrian traffic with vehicular traffic in and out of the residence over here. Also too, you have an established curb cut here, now there's no curb, but there is an apron, so that's the travel in and out of this, that's the travel in and out of this property. And then also, I would say that there should be restrictions on the fact that the property can never be enlarged. Um, and, and maybe that no accessory structures can be added, because then you start saying, well, you can then put an accessory, we need somewhere to put the lawnmower, right?
Yeah.
You know, and then the lawnmower becomes a, a she shed, right?
And, right, and in, um. And sort of i- in its own, in an isolated application, that's a perfectly reasonable quest, right? You know, to say, I have, I've moved into this house, I, I have these. Tools that I need to store, I need to add on, I need to.
And that, and that's where, that's where the slope gets so darn slippery, right, like your house, for example, it's a preexisting nonconforming condition.
My house is a perfect example of this kind of a.
Making use of, yeah, it's a very similar, it's a very similar happening.
Although I think they wanna build a bigger house.
And, but you even, but you wanna do an addition, and may still do an addition, so the reality of it is, is you do need to make use of your house, but that's a preexisting nonconforming. For us to go into this and say, okay, we're gonna, we're, we're not doing this in, you know, the eighteen hundreds, we're doing this in, you know, twenty nineteen. And then we're allowing all these variances to the bulk conformance. And, and then can you also say, well, I can't make use of this house, it's this one bedroom, right, and I don't have anywhere to put the lawn.
I have no place to put my children.
Frankly, where does the lawn, I mean, where does the lawnmower go, where does the, you know, where does anything go? You know, I mean, so then there's probably gonna be the request for an accessory building, right? You know, and then all these, you know, so I, I, I would say, you know, to your question is that if, you know, look, if they go down this path and they're gonna. Looks like they're gonna do this and they, they send it to us before they take final action about a site plan, you know, any opinion on the site plan, which they should. They're, they're not required to, although are they required to, the site plan, they're not required to in the R one.
No, they're not.
You know, so, um, it would not be wise to not send something like that, because if you're not engaging the planning board on the site plan that you have questions about. But regardless, it could, it could, it could go that way. So I think you should, you would put restrictions on it to say, okay, this is it, no further development, no, you know, no additional structures, no. You know, minimize the hardscape because there's, you know, where does the stormwater runoff go, it's a tiny little lot. You know, but again, like, and that was what, what concerned me in the language, saying. Things that are unique to the village, you know, we, we shouldn't be doing things that are Victorian decisions that are no longer good. Only because there are examples of them throughout the village.
Unique to the village, right, I mean.
Because this is new construction, it's, you know.
Applying for a variance for an outhouse because it was historically appropriate in the nineteenth century would not be something you would wanna do now.
Right, yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of questions here and that. But like I said, at the end, the applicant was then talking about being willing to move it, but that seemed to be after, you know, some, a lot of back and forth, so. But obviously they didn't come in that way.
But they didn't come in that way, I don't, I don't know if they had the, um. As you said, use a historical veil to, to say, okay, this is historical, we stay here.
Everybody, including the ZBA in some ways, is basically saying it makes sense it's there because people are used to something being there, and I said. I, I think that is the absolute argument for restoring or enlarging an accessory building. Yes. But if you're gonna, but if you're gonna redevelop this site and put a residence on it, not an accessory building.
Right.
Which then has people living in it, sleeping in it, you know, cooking in it, you know, you got a boiler in the basement, you got whatever.
If it's new, it's not gonna be the same look anyway, people used to what, and then the next day when that shed is gone, they say, okay, where is that thing, then what?
Yeah, and it's not, and it, it, it is the, the view shed, but then, and then it's also the fact that you, you know, you don't, you, you, you know, have you accounted for every possibility, which is like. Stormwater management, you know, transfer fire, you know, just, just quiet enjoyment, you know?
Well, that thing is basically on the sidewalk.
It's, it's less than two, I think it's a foot.
Yeah, I, the, you know, it's just, it, you, you, you can't do that.
I mean, yours must be excluding the porch, yours is still six feet off the sidewalk, right, I mean.
Mine, yeah, mine is.
This is no porch, it's on, literally, it's like taking your house and moving it.
And moving it right to the sidewalk, yeah.
And then, look, if their townhouse is, that's one thing, but that's not what's going on on that street.
No.
You know, and they're not townhouses.
Those are all little setback houses.
Yeah, you know, so I think that, you know, I mean, I, I, okay, alright, so I think that the majority says we're not, we don't wanna go any further, and so I'll just say that. And, and I'm understanding you guys don't really wanna take any position with respect to even talking about if they do this.
I feel like, well, you know. That, we did already say, if, if this is done, we should, we, and that was shared with the zoning board earlier, right?
Well, he was here.
It was that guy there who was, uh, yeah, he was sitting, yeah, he was, he's, he kept saying, what, uh, well, you know, what do you say, I mean, what do we say? And then you kept saying, okay, what do you say, and then it's, it was a back and forth.
And here we are.
Yeah, and then I, I think the couple sitting there was trying to get a feeling from us. Because they didn't get any answer from the zoning board guy, so they were trying to get a feeling from us to, to see if it's doable at all. So we were going back and forth and say, basically assuming all the boards allow it. Okay, and then coming to us, we, I think at the end, we were. We, we were. Against the wall, saying, okay, if you have to do this and this, maybe moving towards, yeah, towards somewhere.
Yeah, without question, there was a lot of pressure to just, just to say something, right?
Yeah, that was, that was. That was the, the end of it.
Yeah, and you know, I, I actually think that I, I'm like reflecting on that meeting now, I, that's. I, I regret that because I feel like, in a way, it, it suggested that. At least, as far as I'm concerned, it suggested that perhaps I would, I endorse the development of this property.
Or, or at least give them the feeling that's doable, that's something that they think is doable.
Why I said repeatedly, I would not do this, I would not do these variances, I would not consider the variances, I think they're too far reaching, I'm not sure they actually can, can or should be.
So the, so the only thing we could say.
That people kinda walk away with what they're looking for.
What we could say, the, in the end, is that you have to stick to the code and we have to follow the code, that's, that's all we could say. That's, that's what basically we told them at the end.
Yeah.
But, you know, at least they were saying, okay, what if we move this thing to the middle a little bit? And, and that seems to be more comfortable with us, but it did not happen.
Yeah, you know, I, I, they have not, this does not, does not visually demonstrate to me. That all of the five factors have, have, or, or any constellation of the five factors have been.
Considered.
Well, that's what I asked, I said, I would like to see some sort of a narrative on these five factors with respect to just kind of aligning.
You know, justified, yeah.
On, you know, on potential site plans, you know?
I feel like if somebody wants to, if somebody wants to present me with a dissertation where they. Propose their project and explain to me and to, and justify it, I'm happy to hear it and to take it into consideration.
Yeah, so probably what we ought to do is, if, if people can, we probably ought to attend the public hearing just to at least listen.
Yeah, okay.
We, we should not participate as, as planning board, but certainly, nothing, you don't lose your personal rights if you wanna talk about it personally, but make sure if you do speak it, if you say it. Speaking as a, you know, as an individual.
Public.
Um, yeah, speaking as an individual, as a homeowner, as a taxpayer, not as a, not as a planning board member.
Right.
If you wanna, if you guys want to put anything on the record. Um, but it probably would be good just to kind of hear it, um, from the horse's mouth, what this application is, they'll be presenting their, you know, their, their, their justification on the five factors.
Are they, I mean.
It's part of the public hearing, yeah, they would have to present their application.
Oh, okay.
When is that, what, do they have a date?
Next week, next Thursday.
I thought that was part of the.
It's, it's in the application, but there's not a lot of narrative, there's not much around it, you know?
Next Thursday, I see.
There's not much around it.
Oh, okay, so maybe that's, maybe that's the, that's the, the main event is at the public hearing where the, where the five factors will be defended.
Oh, oh, here, I wrote it down, yeah, I.
Yeah, so they would, they would present it and it kind of, as they introduce their project to the audience.
I'll, I'm definitely interested in going to that, because I think that base, I think that with that, that's something that the planning board can.
Okay, alright, very good.
Respond to, respond to.
Alright, anything else?
And I think that's why the process is as it is prescribed to be.
That's it, for me.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, thank you.
Hi.
Okay, very good. Alrighty. What's that?
Did you second?
Alrighty.
Alright.
Alright.
More, more to follow.
Good night, Michael.